Let's begin with the COVID briefing this morning. Again, I'll turn it over to the manager. Want to say at a really high level again, thanks to Dr. Esq. And then Public Health. As the numbers are about to show, our community still continues to do really well relative to the other parts of the state. I do in no small measure to the folks we have working on this in our in our community. Obviously, always anxious about the numbers. Manager, you want to call up Dr. Hayden?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. And as part of our regular COVID briefing for work session, we're going to ask to divide this up into three sections. One would be a briefing from Director Hayden. Then we'll turn to Dr. Esq. For his presentation, pause for questions, and then we will bring in our partners at the University of Texas for their third iteration of the nursing home study. So with that, I'll ask Director Hayden to kick us off. Morning, Stephanie.
Good morning, Spencer. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to start my briefing because I would like to acknowledge the work of Austin Public Health and Dr. Esq. Being on our team. The department has the best employees, and they just really have a true heart for public health. And I really want just to take some time to acknowledge them. But this is a team effort. And so when we think about team, and I have conversations with folks across the state of Texas at health departments and across the nation. I have to acknowledge Christopher Shorter for his leadership. He and the city management team, Spencer Crunk, have been so helpful to Austin Public Health in the midst of our response. I want to also thank the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and all of the elected officials. You have supported Dr. Esq. And I throughout this pandemic. And I can just honestly tell you, in talking with some of my colleagues, they're just not getting this kind of support. Your support and belief of public health and the science has helped our community tremendously. We would not be where we are as a community without your leadership and your support. Now, we are transitioning, and I've always said this is like a marathon. So for those of you that are running, we have 13 miles down, and we got 13 more to go. And so I don't want us to celebrate prematurely. But I do want us to stay focused and celebrate along the way the accomplishments that we've made. And so I wanted to just thank our full team again. So thank you again. Our epidemiologists and our surveillance staff are moving very quickly, meeting with others, looking at clusters, reviewing the data. As you may have heard, the CDC updated their information last week. Our team is finalizing our guidance. And so we're going to be putting out a statement later today. But we also will need to update all of our guidance that we have in place. Our childcare folks are working under the saves to put our document in place to work with United Way. Our childcare folks have continued to distribute health and safety supplies. And we have some areas where we're really being proactive, even though we're working across the community. It's important for us to determine where we feel there's a greater need and be able to provide some additional support. Just as a reminder, we are continuing to work with our schools. We have a mailbox for our schools to email us. We have a mailbox for our childcare facilities to email us if they need technical assistance or anything that they may need that is connected to COVID. During this week, we have began working with AISD as a pilot. This is to provide some in-home rapid antigen tests for campuses, for students and staff. And so we are looking at Title I schools to be able to do that work. And so we will provide more information with that. As you all are aware, I know you've been hearing so much about the vaccines and the information about Pfizer and about Moderna. And just a reminder, we have established a vaccine distribution coalition. We've had four meetings, and we're going to have one more meeting. But one of the things we've done is that we've shifted the composition. We're going to still remain a town hall type setting. We've had over 150 people that were at our last meeting. And so we are dividing into subgroups. We're going to focus on priority population engagement, communication, as well as working with our providers. And so this Friday, we will be meeting with our healthcare providers and our vaccine providers to discuss several things that we want to make sure from a plan perspective that we include that. Our plan will be available after probably toward the end of this month. We're going to have one more meeting on December 18th, where we're going to share that draft plan. Then from there, we will include this in your weekly briefing, where you will see the plan that we have put in place for our vaccine distribution. We're continuing to test all of our sites, Dove Springs, Givens, Montapolis, Walnut Creek, Lark Center, Flukeville. You can go to the St. John's site. It's a drive-in site. We have day, evening, and weekend hours. With our homeless update, our eating apart together, we provided over 600,000 meals. And we will continue that operation, and we're preparing for next calendar year. UT Dale and Community Care continues to partnership with us. Today, we have tested over 850 clients and a very low positivity rate. As you all may know, we had our first cold weather shelter activation last Monday on the 30th. And definitely would like to acknowledge all of the partners that assisted us with that process. This was a transition. As most of you know, our plan originally, we were working with churches and other locations, but we made a transition to recreation centers. And so we had a successful cold weather shelter, and we housed over 60 adults. Our ISOFAC and Protective Lodges are continuing. We have 275 guests there. We have housed 74 individuals. And we'll continue to house individuals in that through the Protective Lodges. With our long-term care, as you may see from the website, and I'm sure Esq. Will include this in his presentation, there has been a significant increase in our long-term care facilities. Over the last 14 days, we've had an increase of 124 cases. And so our team are really providing some additional support to them, as well as looking at their care plans, looking at their ability to provide them extra PKE. At this point, they've not requested additional support from the strike team, but our long-term care folks will continue to provide them that assistance. The other thing that some folks may be curious about is with the COVID-19 vaccine. CDC has partnered directly with CVS and Walgreens to administer the COVID vaccine at long-term care facilities. And so most of our operators have registered to receive that vaccine. At this point, that concludes my presentation, and I will turn it over to Dr. Esq. Dr. Esq.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I'll ask AB to pull up my slides. All right, Mayor Council, it's a pleasure to present this update. Next slide, please. Again, this is an update of our graph on new confirmed cases in Travis County, with the yellow being the moving average. Yesterday, we reported 272 new cases, which gave us a moving average of 301, generally an increase over the past seven days. Yesterday, or the day before, we were at 309 on the moving average, so a little bit of a drop. But again, we typically see a decrease on Mondays. So we'll have to watch this week to see if we're going to continue this oscillation that we've seen, or if we're going to continue in an upward direction. We did see a decline the week of Thanksgiving, and that increased starting, of course, the week after Thanksgiving. Next slide, please. This is an update of our new admissions to the hospital. Yesterday, we reported 43 new admissions with a moving average of 35. That's an increase over the past six days. Again, we see the same effect as we saw on the new confirmed cases with a dip during the week of Thanksgiving and an increase following. You can see if you compare to our surge back in June and July, we're about halfway up that stretch that we saw there. But I'm going to talk about something different that we're seeing on the next slide. Again, this is our hospitalizations. So we're looking at, in the blue, the total hospital beds being utilized, and orange, the ICU beds, and the gray ventilator use. Yesterday, we reported 246 total beds being utilized with 226 on the moving average, which is an increase over the past four days. ICU utilization, 75 yesterday, moving average of 75, and that's been flat for the past week. So what I want to point out on this slide is that, so if you compare where we are now to where we were back in June, July, and you follow that line down to the ICU and the ventilator use, you can see that we have about, we were using about 50% more ICU beds for a similar number of hospitalized individuals. So what we're seeing is the effects of clinical treatment. We're seeing the ability of our healthcare systems to manage patients now out of the ICU setting, whereas before, back in June, July, required ICU care. We're also seeing the benefits of having some of those therapeutics in place, such as our convalescent plasma, our monoclonal antibodies, as well as other interventions like rimdesivir and dextromethasone, which are some of the other medications utilized for COVID-19. So overall, we're not seeing the impact on the ICUs that were before. And that's great, because as we discussed during our initial surge, that's the rate-limiting step as far as our hospitals are concerned. Now, I did see a report today expressing some concern about our ICUs being at 85% capacity. Let me just say that in discussions with our healthcare leadership from the three major systems, they are not concerned about the capacity. As a reminder, hospitals generally operate around this range of 80% to 90% or 95% occupancy of ICUs. So it's not alarming at this stage that the ICUs are at 85%. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be careful. We should. But our hospital systems are in good shape right now locally, and we're grateful for the work that they're doing to maintain that capacity to care for people. Next slide, please. Mayor Council, this is an update of the projections from the UT Modeling Consortium. I'll say that the data you're seeing here, the last green dot is on December the 2nd. They're working on some updates into the system right now. I expect they're going to update the next day or so. Right now, it's showing flattening with a decreasing trend over time. I'll tell you that I think this is overly optimistic. I think we're more likely to see a flattening and an increased trend the next time that they update it. And the reason is because the blue line that you see here, which is the best guess, if you will, of the future, is already lower than we've seen in that week or so between when it was last updated and now. So again, we are seeing increases over the past week. My expectation is that this graph and projection will change soon. Next slide, please. Can we see the same thing in terms of the projections for hospitalizations? My prediction is that, again, we're going to see this flattening and trending upward on the next update. Next slide, please. And ICUs, again, we have been flatter in terms of ICUs. So my expectation is that this will remain relatively flat with the update. But again, we may expect an update later today or tomorrow. Next slide, please. Mayor Council, this is an update of a slide that I showed you last week. This is related to active cases per capita, per 100,000 population. You can see that Travis County is at the bottom of this, in the dark blue line. I also want to point out that between last week and this week, the line for Bear County, which is in that lighter shade of blue, is going in an upward direction where it had been relatively steady in the past. You can see that Dallas County and Tarrant County continue that upward trend, but not as acute as it was a couple of weeks ago. Lubbock County is flattening out, as is El Paso County. Again, El Paso still has more than 5,000 active cases per 100,000, so still in a catastrophic situation, but improving. Next slide, please. This is a new graph that I'm sharing with you, and this is, again, based on the Texas Department of State Health Services data related to cumulative deaths. So again, this is showing cumulative deaths by county per 100,000 population to give us a comparison to those same counties. Once again, you see that Travis County is at the bottom of this list with less than 40 deaths per 100,000. When we look at Tarrant and Dallas Counties, they're about 30% to 50% higher than that per capita. When we jump up to Bear County, it's about almost 100% increase over where we are. And then, of course, Lubbock and El Paso Counties significantly higher than we are with El Paso County, more than four times the cumulative death per capita as Travis County. There is not something magical about Travis County. We don't have a force field around us. The force field is created because people have decided to put their masks on, to distance, and to do the things that we need to do to protect this community. When we look at the difference between the death rate in El Paso and the death rate here, this is how we can begin to conceptualize how many lives have been saved by avoiding that kind of surge here. If we had seen this kind of surge here, or if we see it in the future, we're talking about the difference between about 500 deaths here and what would be more than 2,000 deaths. So we're talking about saving more than 1,500 lives in Austin and Travis County so far because of the work in this community and the policies that the mayor and the judge, the council, and the commissioners' court have implemented to protect this community. We have to continue that. As Director Hayden said, this is a marathon, and we got a long way to go in terms of getting this community vaccinated and protected. But if we hold off, if we maintain our vigilance, we can continue the trends that we've been seeing and set the example for the rest of Texas and across the country. Next slide, please. Mayor Council, this is an update of the hospitalizations based on age group. You can see that we've had an increase in our hospitalizations related to that 70 to 79 age group. That's that mustard yellow color, with an increase in that 80-plus age group. We continue to see a decline in our hospitalizations related to that 20 to 29 age group, which is that lighter yellow color. But I'm going to talk more a little bit about that 20 to 29 group. Next slide, please. This is the same data, but broken down by numbers of hospitalizations within each of those age groups. Again, you can see in that 80-plus age group, we went from 24 to 34 in that 70 to 79 from 34 to 52 last week. So again, we're concerned about those increases. We talked last week about that increasing positivity that we're seeing in these upper age groups, and the expectation that was going to translate into increasing hospitalizations, which has happened. Overall, we've moved from 185 hospitalizations two weeks ago to a little more than 200 last week. So again, we have to continue the efforts to protect the entire community, but in particular, those who are over the age of 60 or 65, because they have a much higher risk of being hospitalized and having a severe illness. Next slide, please. Now, this is an update of our graph associated with hospitalizations by race and ethnicity. You can see that we've had further decline in our percentage of our Latinx community hospitalized. We've, last week, 34.9% of hospitalizations were from our Latinx community, 10.8% in our African-American community, Asian-American community, 2.7%, and our white, non-Hispanic, 50.5%. So this represents the first time in this pandemic that the percentage of white, non-Hispanics has been overrepresented in terms of the representation in the community. This is what we've expected to see as the disease transmits throughout the community, that the hospitalization rate may take a, or may look a lot more like the breakdown of the race and ethnicity in our community. Overall, we are, continue to be concerned about this proportion of impact on our Latinx community, our African-American community. And as Director Hayden mentioned earlier, we'll continue those efforts of outreach to those communities. Next slide, please. Again, similar to the age graph, this is a breakdown by numbers of individuals hospitalized in each of those races and ethnicities. You can see that same numbers in our Latinx population hospitalized between each group. The big difference that you see is that the numbers of white, non-Hispanics went up substantially from 79 to 94 to account for the difference in percentages. Next slide, please. This is an update of our graph associated with positivity across our community. Two weeks ago, we were at 6.5%. That's week 48. Last week, the data that we have so far is 6.8%. So relatively flat as compared to last week and three weeks ago. Now, people would ask me, what about week 47? How do we get down to 5.2%? The answer is, we tested a whole lot of people. So the testing the week before Thanksgiving skyrocketed, which accounts for the decreased number. Actually, the number of positive people detected during week 47 was higher than the weeks on either side of that. But because of that substantial increase in testing, it appears that the positivity went down. I think it's more accurate to say, disease transmission over the past four weeks has been about the same. Next slide, please. Now, this is that positivity broken down by race and ethnicity. Our Latinx community has week 48, 11.4%, week 49 so far, 11.3%, relatively flat. Our African-American community, week 48, 6.4%, week 49, 6.8%, again, relatively flat. Our Asian-American community, week 48, 3.9%, week 49, 6.8%. So significant jump there. Again, week 49's data is preliminary because we still have a lot more data points coming in, so it is. Our American Indian and Alaskan Native community, 8.9% week 48, 7.7% week 49, and our white, non-Hispanic, 5.3% week 48 and week 49, so relatively flat there. Again, we want to be under this green dotted line, and all of our race and ethnicities continue to be above that mark. Next slide, please. This is the breakdown of positivity by age group. Again, we see that we've got an increase in our 40 to 49 age group. Luckily, so far for last week, we're seeing significant decreases in those older age groups, the 60 to 69, 70 to 79, and 80-plus age groups. Now, when we look at our data from our Austin Public Health only testing, what it shows us is that last week, 50% of the positive tests were in the 20 to 29 and 30 to 39 age group. Now, those two age groups represent about 35% of our population, so significant overrepresentation in terms of cases in those younger age groups. As a reminder, we need everybody to follow those, that public health advice, masking, distancing, hand hygiene, making sure that they're staying home when they're sick. Even if they have mild symptoms, that disease can spread to other people and folks who are more vulnerable. So it is critical that people of all ages, all the advice, and protect themselves so they can protect the rest of the community. Next slide, please. As Director Hayden mentioned, this is an update of our nursing home, long-term care facility dashboard. It's on our COVID-19 website at the city. We've had more than 2,000 cases associated with these long-term care facilities since the pandemic began, 124 in the last 14 days, similar number the two weeks prior to that. Again, as we see disease increase in the community, we see it impacting our nursing homes and our most vulnerable individuals. A total of 210 of the deaths in the entire community have been from these facilities. You know, that's about 40% of the overall deaths. And this is why nursing homes and long-term care facilities will be one of the initial targets for vaccine, because if we can effectively vaccinate these sites, we can eliminate that 40% of future deaths that our community may experience. Obviously, we also see increased risk of death in older age groups outside of nursing homes, with the 80-plus, 70 to 79, and 60 to 69 age groups, representing about 81% of the total deaths that we've experienced. If we add in individuals over the age of 50 with underlying health conditions, it accounts for close to 95% of the deaths that we've experienced. And I bring this up because while we want to have widespread vaccination across our community, it is critical that we focus our efforts on those older individuals, because if we do, we can really impact the potential for death and severe disease in the future. And we also then protect our hospitals, our healthcare workers, and first responders that are not going to be exposed, because those people don't end up in the hospital. And I think that we have more work to do from our Vaccine Coalition, but I'm excited by the work and the contributions of the group that's been assembled. Next slide, please. Mayor Council, this is an update of our schools report. This is for the week of November 30th to December 6th. You can see that we've had 82 student cases reported in that week, 79 staff cases, four cases in the other groups. So those are visitors to campus that aren't directly affiliated with the campus. Again, Austin ISD was virtual last week, so we have more than 50 cases that didn't expose others on the campus. So that should help limit the impact in the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So you can see that while the cases are manageable, the real impact that we're seeing is on those individuals that need to be quarantined as a result of exposure. So more than 1,400 individuals in our Travis County schools are staying home because they've been identified as a close contact. This is impacting our schools. In particular, the 176 staff members who are in quarantine can have a dramatic effect on the school's ability to continue normal operations. So we're continuing to work with our schools on this, and in addition to that, we are taking into account new direction from CDC regarding the duration of the quarantine. And on that note, I'm going to switch to the next slide and talk about what was released this morning from Austin Public Health. And I'm going to talk you through this. It may be hard for you to read, but, you know, part of the process of the interpretation of the CDC guidance is to weigh when people need a 14-day quarantine and when we can be okay with a shorter duration. I want to be very clear that CDC continues to say the 14-day quarantine is the safest route to go. They also point to the fact that people should be guided by local health departments on how to interpret this information. So this is our interpretation of that guidance. So if an individual's a close contact with someone with COVID-19, they face this initial question, was that exposure when masks were worn or not? If it was not, so if masks were not used, the answer to that question is yes, then they enter a 14-day quarantine. So why are they in a 14-day quarantine? Because they weren't wearing masks. Because this is the situation where we are seeing efficient disease transmission. This is happening in athletic activities. This is happening in social activities. This is happening in carpooling. Now, this is where we're seeing that disease transmission. Household contacts is another great example of that. So there is a much higher risk of transmission, which means we need to hold on to that individual for longer to ensure that we're giving it the full 14 days before we allow them to interact with other individuals in the community. If the answer to that question is no, if you were wearing a mask at the time of exposure, the next question is, do you ever work with an individual who is at high risk for severe disease? So this could be workers at nursing homes, this could be employees working in jails, this could be individuals who have someone in their household who is over the age of 65 or has a high-risk medical condition. If the answer to that question is yes, they also need to quarantine for 14 days, again, to ensure that we are limiting the potential impact on those who are at higher risk. If the answer to that question is no, the next question is, are they a first responder, EMS in particular, or a healthcare worker? If the answer to that is yes, then we are advising that they need to stay quarantined for seven days, and on or after the seventh day, have a test which is negative before returning to work. If the answer to all those questions is no, then they can utilize the 10-day option or the seven days with a negative test. So what's the difference between the healthcare worker, first responder, and this last option? The answer is, the last option is that the individual needs to be tested on or after the fifth day, and can be cleared on the seventh day. We want to be a bit more protective for our healthcare workers and our first responders because of the closeness of interaction with other people, in particular patients, and that individual who had been exposed. So that gives us two extra days to determine if that person is likely to develop disease or not. Again, we will be codifying this guidance in our city and county orders and rules to reflect these changes. I have faced the question, are these recommendations or requirements? They're requirements. And these are, this is, the enabling legislation is in the Health and Safety Code, Chapter 81, which gives the local health authority the responsibility for controlling individuals who've been exposed to disease. So again, there's, we have seen some information come out from the TEA and from the UIL with guidance for schools. But again, the TEA and UIL don't have the, that enabling legislation to provide guidance or institute rules associated with individuals who have been identified as exposed. Next slide, please. Mayor and Council, again, we're still in the middle of our influenza season. Week 48, we had a 1.45% positivity, a total of 1.04% for our overall positivity, only 33 cases to date so far identified for flu. Next slide, please. Again, this is an update of our graph associated with our trends this year as compared to the three previous seasons. Again, we are remarkably lower than the previous three seasons. If folks still haven't received their influenza vaccination, we recommend they do that now, particularly as we head into December, January, and February, which is when we expect to see the peak of our flu season. Our hope is that folks will continue to get their flu shots, and that those protective actions that we utilize for COVID-19 will also help to keep this curve flat for the duration of flu season. Next slide, please. Again, we remain in the stage four of risk, and I just wanted to clarify something, because I think sometimes the message may not be clear. In particular, when we talk about the social gatherings and the dining and shopping, our advice is not that everyone needs to avoid these activities, but individuals who live in a high-risk household or are high-risk themselves, including those over the age of 65, need to be more protective. Those individuals should avoid activities outside the household, they should do pickup or delivery for food options or groceries. Individuals who are at lower risk can still go to dining and shopping, but we have to understand where the risk is. And the risk is when we take our masks off in front of other people. It is safe for individuals to go to a restaurant and have a meal with their family members and take their masks off while they're eating. The risk is when people are outside of their household and that mask comes off, that is where transmission is happening. You know, it's critical. It doesn't matter the setting, that is when transmission is happening, when that mask is coming off. It's happening in carpools, it's happening at parties, it's happening in break rooms, in businesses where employees are taking breaks and taking their masks off. We must be very careful and very selective who we are willing to take our masks off and be face-to-face with, particularly within six feet indoors. You know, I went out to a meal with my family this weekend, and, you know, the restaurant did a great job. Everybody had their mask on, they enforced the masking, it wasn't crowded, less than 50% occupancy, booths with high wa, it was all done very well. But we wore our masks into the restaurant, we wore our masks while we're seated, we wore our masks when the waiter came within six feet of the table, and we had our masks off while we're eating and drinking. There's minimal risk. We're not as concerned about transmission happening from tables across the room. We're seeing transmission happening with people who are seated at the table with you, and that's why it really should be limited to people within your household. And with that, I'll pass it back to you, Spencer, for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden. And with that, Mayor, we'll turn it back to you for questions from the dais.
I don't see the mayor. Does anybody have questions? But Councilmember Flanagan?
Thank you, Mayor Tim. Just as you go through the slides, I'm curious when, which slides are including the Williamson County part of the city and which ones aren't? Because I know like when we, the dashboard includes it because it's Austin Public Health, but some of these charts are broken out by county. And of course, Williamson County is now, you know, recently into the highest level. I think they might use a, they said red, I think, I don't know if it's similar to our scale. And of course, I think y'all saw the news story that Williamson County GOP is doing a potluck dinner in Georgetown, which I think Dr. Esq. is squarely in the camp of things not to do in a pandemic. But I am curious about the Wilco numbers and if we can start seeing those, if you can add Wilco to the chart of counties, and if you have any comment on what spread looks like in suburban communities, specifically because, in my case at least, for my constituents, you have families from Williamson County and Travis County going to the same schools, going to the same grocery stores. It's not like other areas where maybe there's distance between centers. It's really blended.
So Councilmember, the data on positivity will include some Williamson and surrounding county residents, and that's based upon the fact that some of those individuals are tested within Travis County. So, you know, I can tell you that when we break down the positivity by county, Williamson County is significantly higher in terms of the positivity of the data that we are receiving than is Travis County. Caldwell County is significantly higher than Travis County in that positivity as well. So there is, you know, again, I think the more compliance that we see with public health guidance, the lower the positivity rate. And, you know, I think having large events that don't involve masks and distancing is a terrible idea. We are in unprecedented surge in this country. We have unprecedented numbers of deaths daily in this country. This is not the time to host a potluck.
Can we start adding Wilco to some of the county charts that you show in your briefings?
I will. What I can do, Councilmember, is to have a similar breakdown with the MSA counties.
Okay. I think that would be helpful, as I know a lot of folks watch this, and I don't want them to think that the Travis County numbers doing so much better than other urban counties is somehow representative of the challenges we're seeing in our suburban counties.
Mayor, mute.
Sorry to have missed you. I had technical issues back now. Anne, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Hayden. I appreciate what you said when you started your presentation, that everybody has been working incredibly hard. And I'm also, you know, pleased to see the difference we're still making here in Travis County. So I appreciate that both you and Dr. Esq. have pointed that out to us. I think it's important for us, for our community, to understand that and understand, as Dr. Esq. said, that we need to maintain the behaviors that we've been engaging in so that we can stay at the bottom of that chart when we're looking at other counties and keep our death rate down.
I have just a few questions. On the pro lodges, you mentioned this, Director Hayden, but I'm not remembering exactly what you said. There's 200 and something folks still in the pro lodges, right? Is that what you said?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. There are, yes, there are 275 in all five protective lodges.
Okay. And that's great. Sounds like we're making progress in connecting people to housing, because I think you said there were 74 now that had been connected. Is that right? Okay. That's great. That really is good. My question is, you know, we had talked, I think, last week maybe, or I forget when, but we had talked about the, sort of the trajectory on what happens with those pro lodges. And I had, my thinking is that they need to remain functional until we get everyone into housing. So can you just state the status of that? Because I know there was some thinking that they needed to be closed down at the end of December, and I'm not certain where we're at right now. So can you talk to us about that?
Yes. There is going to be an update that is going to come out to Mayor and Council next week about homelessness in general. It will also have this information in the memo, but the goal is to house the folks that are at the protective lodges.
So will, yeah, so will we keep them operating without closing them down at the end of December?
Yes, we will. We will keep them operating. You know, once we start to move folks, you know, from our protective lodge, we will consolidate. And so you will see that in the memo. But the goal is to house the 275 guests. About 170 of them actually have, you know, a case manager assigned, and as we transition folks to housing, then we continue to assign the other folks. All of them have access to behavioral health services, because we know that is very important to all of our guests is to have that access to behavioral health services.
Okay, thank you. The other question was, and I think maybe Councilmember, sorry I raised this, I forget now, but the other question was, so that is good. I appreciate hearing that, Director Hayden. So the other question was just extending those pro lodges, because we're still in the middle of a pandemic, and we are looking at, well, I'm not going to predict, but we're looking at significant additional time before our community is vaccinated and we can say that we're past that. So, and if, just tell me the path to understanding, even if you don't have the answers today, but the path to understanding how, what our options are for keeping those open.
Well, currently, we are working with FEMA, because we're under a declaration of emergency. And so, you know, we'll continue to, staff are working on a memo that we're going to send them, that just, you know, talks about the need for us to maintain them. And so the goal is, is that FEMA would reimburse the City of Austin at the 75%. And so as long as we're under that declaration, we'll continue to bill FEMA in hopes that they will approve it. And so that is the strategy, you know, moving forward as long as we're under the declaration.
Okay. I just, thank you. I asked that you all return to council and ask us before you close them, because I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but I'll leave it to them to speak to that. But I feel pretty strongly that we should not be closing pro lodges, because we are still in the pandemic, and we are still experiencing increases. Even though we're doing a good job in this community, we're still, we're still under threat. And so I do not want to see the pro lodges closed. So I would just ask that, I don't want to hear about it, and, you know, I don't want to hear after, you know, if FEMA turns you down or if something else happens, you know? Then I would ask that you come back to council and say, we've tried all of our options and keep this open. But I'd like to hear that before, so that this council has the opportunity to consider that, and then say, here's what we think we can do to keep them open. So I would just ask that you all do that. A commitment from you, city manager, that we have that?
Councilmember, thank you for bringing that up. And certainly, you know, as Director Hayden mentioned, you know, we have been successful in moving people from pro lodges into housing, and as that process continues... And as that process continues, there will be a need to consolidate the different facilities. But I hear you loud and clear. We don't want to not have that option for people to utilize these important resources. And so we will be providing that update to you through the memo. But we have the ability to extend these leases with the current contracts. And if there is any need to come to council to further extend, we will do that, obviously, with the direction that you're giving right now.
Yes. And I want to be clear, I'm not just talking about the 274 people. You know, there are criteria for people in the pro lodges. So what I don't want to do is that those are the only people that we're going to now protect. If they, if there are people that continue to meet the criteria for the pro lodges, I don't want us to consolidate people as we get them into housing and then close down pro lodges and just, and close down the opportunity for someone who meets the criteria to actually go into a pro lodge during the time that we're still, we're still in the pandemic. So I wanted to make sure that that's, that's what I meant. So does that make sense? Is it clear?
Councilmember, I think so. I'm going to talk to staff to make sure that that direction is in line with what their current operational plan is.
Okay. And then you all will come back to us if you somehow are not able to do that? Right? City manager?
Yes. Sorry, Councilmember. Yes.
All right. Thank you. I have other questions, but I'll let, I'll let others ask questions. And then Mayor, you could come back to me.
Okay. Don't see any hands yet. Dr. Escott and Director Hayden, you added Chris Shorter to the list of people to thank, and I think that's real appropriate. One of the real strengths of what we've done here has been how we've worked with the communities experiencing homelessness during this period of time and setting up those systems. And he was one of the folks that acted really quickly and really early on that and has done just a really good job as well. So thank you for adding him. With respect to the vaccine issues that, I don't know, and again, I apologize if you discussed this when I was having technical difficulties and disappeared. But the vaccine issue, just to be clear for the community, starts coming out here in December. We would anticipate to the highest priority folks. And then there are other tiers as it rolls out then in the coming months. And then we hope to be able to get it to the community generally in the late spring to the summer. Did you have a chance to talk about the priorities and who's getting it first?
No, Mayor, we did not talk about the priorities. I can go ahead and share that now with Phase 1, which is where we are, Phase 1A. Hospital staff, EMS, home care staff, as well as long-term care residents and employees are slated for the initial vaccines. And so the vaccines that we are aware of that are going to arrive will go to to our hospital staff initially.
Okay. And that's good. And then working through those and then the frontline workers that are dealing with people that have the virus and those people in the long-term care facilities and other places that represent the highest number of people that have the most serious impacts if they, if they, if they get it. We're going to be talking, I guess, in the community at some point. The hope is, is that it gets analyzed. And I'm sure that the local folks here will also be taking a look at the effectiveness and safety of the vaccine. But when it comes out, we're going to need a really high adoption rate in order to be able to protect the entire community. So again, since we're probably not going to see you until, until January, this being the last kind of council meeting, you're putting together that kind of effort to make sure that people understand and have the information to be able to make that educated decision about the uptake and use of the vaccine when it comes in. I want to touch base real quickly. Dr. Escott, you talked about the ICU numbers a little bit in relation to the headline that's in the newspaper today that was something like our ICUs are nearing capacity. And what I understood from what you said is that headline might be overstating it just just a little bit in terms of present concern for the, for the community. We went to the community back in June when the numbers were going up and we were on a trajectory to have our ICUs overwhelmed. We're not seeing that same slope right now and that same numbers in our ICUs. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. You know, in talking to our healthcare executives, the hospitals are busy, but not really busier than usual at this time of year. You know, there's, there's 75 in the ICU from COVID, but it's busy with other things that we normally see an increase of this time of year. You know, again, normally hospitals don't run, similar to other businesses, with a lot of extra capacity. They, you know, they, they work with that, you know, 85, 90% a lot of the time. In the winter, in a typical year, you know, it's at 90% for, or higher for a lot of the season. You know, in having the conversations with our healthcare executives regarding elective surgeries, they feel comfortable continuing those procedures based upon the, you know, the current demand and capacity. But, you know, again, we're watching those numbers closely. We continue to meet with those executive weekly. We are, again, concerned about, about our hospital staff numbers. And, you know, in addition to, you know, people being exposed and quarantined in relation to, you know, nurses and respiratory techs and doctors, we are also seeing personnel going to other states that are facing surge now. And this is really at the heart of the reason why the highest priority for vaccination across the country, including here, has been to reinforce our hospital infrastructure.
And to that, and to, I just want to, on the ICU issue, just because of the headline, ICUs normally operate at 85, 90%. That's what hospitals do, and that's how they keep the staff there. And we're running those numbers. But in terms of having a virus pandemic warning sign in our ICUs right now, we really haven't doubled in the, in the last month. The numbers in 70, we were up at 80 some odd earlier. And the way that the state measures concern with respect to ICUs is the percentage of patients in ICUs that are, that are virus related. And their warning sign is when you go above 15% of the patients in the ICUs virus related. And there are about five counties in the state right now that have exceeded that number. That's when people start taking the remediation action. We're not up at the 15% number. We're significantly below that. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. And it's, it's actually for the TSA, the trauma service area. So it's, it's much broader than the five-county MSA.
So our numbers are below that. And we have the triggers that will let us know, just like in June, if we start getting to the place where our ICUs seem to be getting overwhelmed, we have the ability to be able to do that. But at this point, we have the capacity such that our hospitals are still doing elective care, for example. So if somebody has an elective surgery that needs to be done, this is not a time not to be reaching out to the, to the hospitals to have taken care of the things that you, that you need to take care of. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. On the positivity numbers, good to see that the Latino community numbers are low in terms of total admissions. We see the positivity numbers where it's about 10% and kind of holding. But just to note, kind of as a, as a red flag off in the distance, community cares numbers, the integral, the the health component arm of our system that's dealing with folks that lack insurance and that kind of stuff, they're seeing pretty significant increases right now in positivity in the Latino community. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. The numbers for last week so far are over 22% positivity for that Latinx population that they serve.
Okay. And just point that out just because that's kind of like a, one of the early warning signs and signals that I know you and Director Hayden continue to watch. I was looking at the age breakdowns on the charts that you have, and you can look at this later. But I was seeing that the, the number of folks in the 70 to 79 range, that kind of gray or silver number seemed to have gone up in, you know, as a, and as a bigger percentage of the total group. But in the line chart, it seemed to go down in the last week. And I didn't understand that. So you might want to take a look and peek on that. And then the last thing before I turn this over to my colleagues is the county judge and the mayor's orders will have to be renewed by the end of the month. And we continue to work with you on drafting those orders that may have a little bit different way of taking a look at gatherings outside. So as to encourage people to be outside as opposed to inside, we don't want to chase people inside for activities and probably a renewal of the eviction orders in a way that coincides with what the JP courts will be, will be doing. So I appreciate your continued assistance with respect to those orders as we try to hew to the science and data that you give to us. Thank you. Mayor Potem?
I have a couple of questions, but I also wanted to quickly thank Assistant City Manager, Chris Shorter. He hasn't really been in these meetings, but I know he's been working really hard behind the scenes because when I have had specific questions from constituents or issues, he's the one I've reached out to. And he's, I mean, within hours, the issue is taken care of. So thank you for that. Assistant City Manager Shorter. And Director Hayden, this, this will be my last meeting with you. I'm going to be an emotional mess this week, but we'll hold it together as much as possible. It's been an honor working with you and your team. I truly believe even before the pandemic, you know, the work that we did to increase your budget, public health budget, really has saved lives, especially, you know, in this time and improved the quality of life for Austinites. So thank you so much for always working with me on those issues and for my colleagues for obviously always supporting those things. And Dr. Escott, I want to thank you for being, you know, such a, such a great voice during this time. And you've shown, and I appreciate you pointed it out, that you can have different political ideologies, but still believe in, in science and facts. And I'm grateful that you had, you've pointed that out and you've kept our, helped to keep our community safe. So thank you for that. My questions, real quick one, the 14-day quarantine slide, I'm sure that's something I can access, but I'm operating on really low staff right now. So I was wondering if public health could send, probably to all council members, I thought that was a really good slide. And if you have it in Spanish, I would love to share that on my social media. I was, I was wondering about, I think it was a statesman article, it talked about the, the number of vaccines we're getting. And I had two concerns. I had a concern, and I hope that public health is thinking about, you know, fraud. And, you know, during this time, there's been, there's, you know, these, these testing facilities pop up in parking lots. And I'm a little worried that something similar may happen when the vaccine starts to get distributed, these, that prey on, you know, people that maybe don't speak English very well or elderly. And so I'm hoping we're anticipating, we see it with Austin Energy Bills all the time, you know, targeting, targeting certain communities. And so I hope we have a plan in place to, to ensure that our community is not being taken advantage of as the vaccines start to get distributed. And then the, there was a statesman article I saw about, it said that Travis County had like, it was like 164 people confirmed to distribute the vaccine. And so I was curious, you know, during the first phase of this pandemic, there was kind of a hierarchy in testing, and it was just public health that had all the testing. And then as I guess supplies got, you know, better, then private, you know, then ARC started having testing and everybody else is, is something, could something similar like that happen with the vaccine? So I understand right now there's a hierarchy of, of the vaccine, I'm assuming through government agencies will be distributed that. I wasn't sure about that. Is it possible that at some point then the private, you know, the ARCs and the, all the community clinics are not necessarily community, the private, you know, clinics would start to get, and will they be required to follow the same distribution? Is this, is this kind of different than, than the testing? Because there was, and I'm assuming it's going to constantly change because that's what happened with testing. At first you had, there was this protocol to get tested, then there was this protocol to get tested. So can we expect something similar when the vaccine starts to get distributed?
Yes. And I also would like to publicly thank you for all your support to Austin Public Health. You are definitely going to be missed by us. And so the really great thing with this response is, is that, as you read, over, it's about 170 or so that have registered to provide the vaccine. So when more vaccine becomes available, those providers will, will start to receive their shipment. And so, you know, your typical pharmacy where you may go now to get, you know, a flu, you know, vaccine, you'll be able to go to those sites as well. You know, several offices have signed up with the state. Anyone that, we're still looking for providers in our community. And so we just ask them to reach out to the state of Texas and, you know, and sign up with them. Everyone that signs up with them has to go through a training and they, train them on their system and kind of train them on, on the platform. And so, you know, us as partners, we will be able to see, you know, where the vaccine is going in Travis County and how many doses of, you know, who's getting what based upon that system. And so Austin Public Health and EMS have signed up to, you know, be able to provide it. We're going to be working, you know, from a, you know, city of Austin employee perspective, Dr. Escott and I are going to be meeting with, with Joya to talk about how we typically have done with, with the flu vaccine as well. But the goal is, is that everyone should be able to get their vaccine. The more that comes, the more providers will have that access. So we're really excited about how this process has rolled out with reputable vendors that are registered with the state.
And Mayor Potem, let me just clarify something as well. The, the supplies that are going for, to the hospitals right now are what we call closed pod. That's point of distribution. That means that they are only providing vaccine for their employees. So people can't go to hospitals and ask for a vaccine at this stage. We'll continue that closed pod system to get those priority 1A folks in to secure that healthcare infrastructure. As we move into, you know, Phase 1B, Phase 2, then we're going to be talking about having that, that vaccine available more publicly outside of what we call an open pod. But we really must prioritize those who are at higher risk for severe disease. So again, you know, those who are over the age of 80 are at the highest risk for, for severe disease and death, and then followed by 70 and 60 and 50. So, you know, we're, we're going to have to be patient as a community. The younger and healthier folks are, the longer time it's going to be before they're going to have a vaccine available to them. Because public health is not receiving all the vaccine and is not the only distributor, what we're working on is community guidance for who should be prioritized for, for vaccines. So we can all be approaching it from the same direction in terms of how we're going to to prioritize the right time for various parts of our community to receive vaccine.
Is it, okay, last question. Is it possible that, how do I ask this? People with access to more resources could get the vaccine sooner, and I'm assuming that that is possibly the case, and so I would, I'm sure everybody believes this, but we would encourage to make sure, you know, any access Public Health can get to the vaccines, we prioritize our communities of color and make sure that it's free to those communities for equitable reasons, because I know in the beginning of this, I heard anecdotal stories of people being able to get tested before, really it was very widespread, and it was people with access to resources. And so just hope, obviously, that we are, once we get to the stage where we can start vaccinating the general population, so to speak, that's, you know, not Public Health, not in the hospital, that we prioritize and make it free for our most vulnerable populations.
I don't think there's any question, but that's the plan. Councilmember Kitchen?
I had a question related to the AISD Caregivers Fund, and I think this is a question for Dr. Hayden. Is that, can you give me the status of that? I had understood that perhaps that Caregivers Fund was going to be ending. Can you tell me the status of that?
Yes. The funding for those meals will end this month, and so, you know, we've, you know, worked with AISD to, you know, to get us to this point, but the funding for those meals will end later this month.
Do we have any options? And I'm happy to talk with you, you know, offline, but I'm curious about what, if we know yet, what our options might be to extend it.
It may be great for you and I maybe to talk offline.
Okay.
So I can get with Dora and schedule that.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. Because my question really relates to, first off, of course, I want to understand the continued need under that assumption, and then I'm wanting to understand what kind of options there might be. So we'll schedule then to talk, and I know that I don't see Councilmember Tovo, I know that's something that she's been.
I'm here. Yeah, thank you. I'd like to be in the loop on that too, since I had brought that resolution forward. I'd like to understand better whether there are any options. So thank you, Councilmember Kitchen, for including me in that.
Okay.
Anybody anything before we head to the nursing home briefing? Yes, Councilmember Renteria.
Yes. I noticed that here in Austin ISD, on the sharp, that we've had the most staff cases in all the other school districts. Do you know, can you tell us what's the big problem with the staff infections there at Austin ISD? Does anyone have any information on that?
Councilmember, generally when we're seeing disease spread amongst school staff members, it has to do with outside activities, activities outside of school, primarily social gatherings. So again, it's, we have to maintain our force field, and that's the mask, and be very selective who were without masks in front of. So we have not seen transmission in classroom settings between students and teachers. We have had some cases of teacher to teacher in situations like break rooms or smaller rooms when masking is not followed, but that's generally what we've been seeing amongst those staff members.
Well, that's very concerning because, you know, it seems like the staff in Austin ISD is the ones that are having the most infection, even though some of the other schools that their students like Flugerville and Inns have a high student infection, but a very low staff infection. That's, I'm very concerned that, you know, maybe we need to reach out to Austin ISD and let their teachers know that they're, you know, what we're seeing, and I hope they're seeing that too, so that, you know, when they're out doing other activities, they take care of themselves a little bit better.
Yes, Councilmember, we meet with all the superintendents in Travis County on a weekly basis. You know, there is a substantial difference in the size of the district and faculty and staff in AISD as compared to all the other school districts, which is going to be impactful on those numbers.
Well, the big concern is that, you know, there's a lot of discussion right now where teachers do not want to go back to the classrooms, and they're starting to see that there's a big infection going on within staff members. You know, that's very alarming, because we do have a lot of teachers out there that, you know, they have pre-existing conditions, and they're very afraid to go back, and hear the possibility of them losing their jobs or not going back, and then they see a big high staff infection within the staff members, then, you know, it's sort of justify their argument that, you know, they don't want to go back, and they shouldn't be forced to go back, and they shouldn't be laid off, and that's a big concern of mine, it's awesome.
Well, again, Councilmember, it's, they work at a school, that's much different from they got the infection from the school. And again, we've seen the same issue with other members of our workforce. You know, people are very concerned about the workspace, and they're wearing masks and distancing because it's very well organized, but they feel safer in different settings, like in barbecues or family gatherings, which is much less safe than the school work environment. So again, we've got to reiterate the message that the same concepts that we talk about about needing to protect schools, you need to utilize in your personal life to protect yourselves there as well.
Thank you for that. It is just alarming.
Okay. Anything else before we hear from the nursing home report? Then let's move over to that.
Thank you, Mayor, and we'll let Dr. Esq. go to the Commissioner's Court, but I'll ask Director Hayden to kick off this next part of the COVID briefing.
We, as you recall, council passed a resolution that discussed the need for a study in long-term care. This is our third report. We have Stacy Chang that is here with us today, and she is going to provide a presentation. We've also, you should have received a report from Katie, she sent that in your backup, as well as the presentation. At this time, I will transition over to Stacy Chang.
Thank you, Director Hayden. Apologies, it took a minute there to transition. I'm also joined by a colleague of mine, Stephanie Morgan, so the individual controlling the webex, if you could bring her in as well, I'd appreciate it. Let's see, my video should be started now. There we are. So thank you again, Director Hayden, for having us, councilmembers, and to the mayor as well. The presentation we're going to share today is a little bit different than the last two times we were in front of you, and for a couple of reasons. The last two times we presented to you was around the research that we had done regarding the challenges the nursing homes and facilities face. It was more conclusive in nature. We are currently knee-deep in design and development in terms of responses to those challenges that we observe. And so this is very much a progress report. We wanted to share that with you before the year end because we wouldn't see you again, we wouldn't have an opportunity to see you again until January, and we do not want to wait that long for you to have a sense of where we are making progress. So this is an opportunity to share, for the person controlling the AV, if you could bring up the slide deck, I'd appreciate that. So as Director Hayden mentioned, this is the third phase, and we are now in design and development. Go to the next slide, please. We're going to spend, just touch on the objective once again, share with you an approach that we've divided into three tracks, tell you a little bit about the direction of the strategy for the design, and then the prototypes that are currently being developed before we talk about next steps and open it up for discussion. Next slide, please. As a reminder, we were asked by the city of Austin to identify the challenges, really at a systemic level, to keeping residents safe from the COVID-19 pandemic, both in nursing homes and assisted living centers and other long-term care facilities. As I mentioned, the previous phases of work sponsored by the city were really focused on research and understanding the challenges. The current phase of work, which has been generously sponsored by the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation, is about standing up responses to that. As a group of folks from UT who are actually committed to design, it's not just research that we're interested in, it's actually in standing up the responses to those and making change against the challenges that we observe. Next slide, please. The goal for these subsequent phases is really to design and develop, and then actually to implement and evaluate possible solutions. So we're doing that across a number of fronts, and that's divided into what we've defined as three tracks. Next slide, please. I don't need to pause on the state of the COVID statistics. Dr. Esq. has shared that already, so we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. We've divided the work into three tracks, and what you'll hear from my colleague Stephanie Morgan this morning really is going to focus quite significantly on Track 1, because that work is being done in collaboration with the long-term care facilities themselves. It is the biggest effort, the one that requires the most intense work, and is being done in facility and in collaboration with those facilities. So we started that work first because we knew it was a long lead time effort, and so most of what you'll hear today is an update on that track in particular, with a very specific focus on the critical workforce that's keeping residents in those facilities safe. We'll touch on Track 2 and Track 3, which will progress further subsequent to this presentation. Track 2 is really thinking about what it takes from a regional collaboration standpoint to actually spawn a systemic response, and then Track 3 is really on some long-term policy and regulatory issues that we hope to inform the upcoming legislative session on. So I'm going to pause now and hand this over to my colleague Stephanie Morgan. She is a design researcher, designer, and project lead at the Design Institute for Health. She's taken on primary responsibility for the design and development phase of this work, and I'll let her share the subsequent details. Stephanie?
Thank you, Stacy. You can go next slide, please. Just to bridge with what Stacy just shared, we really wanted to ensure that with this three-track approach, we would be able to maximize the number of individuals who could both contribute to the design development as well as collaborate with us for the potential for future collaboration, to ensure that whatever is done currently today can be hopefully more sustainable as we consider both now near and far-term solutions. Next slide, please. So this is where I think I'll really begin to pick up the thread that we had shared last we met in September regarding the identification of the five strategic opportunity areas. You might recall infection control, staff well-being, expansion and evolution of staff roles, retention and incentives on resident well-being, were the areas that after our phases 1 and 2 of research really emerged as being areas critical to investigate in terms of figuring out how, from a systems perspective, we could be able to move the needle on some of the challenges, tensions, and gaps that were identified in those spaces. Next slide, please. And as designers, you know, we came out of those five opportunity areas with probably around, you know, 50/54 specific ideas and considerations that we could move forward with. And a question we commonly get then is how do we take that information and insight and filter it down really into action, thinking how to move it forward? So specifically, this work, we reviewed those opportunities, identified, and collectively from a design strategy and feasibility lens, understood what we actually could implement, what we actually could create in the next few months and stand up. We also worked with Dr. Liam Frye, who's been a close partner and subject matter expert in geriatrics, to kind of use her to pressure check some of these ideas and figure out if the avenues we were down stepped toward really could resonate with the long-term care experience of staff and residents as well. Next slide, please. And so in doing this, we arrived at these five nuanced design directions, training, helping with infection control, preventing staff burnout, building staff morale, and improving communication capabilities. Next slide, please. And so part of our process is really trying to understand from the facilities themselves what these needs are and what solutions could be generated to most meet those needs. And typically, in non-COVID times, this is an incredibly immersive collaborative process. We are usually in one room together with a lot of, you know, stimuli and tools around us to allow us to all provide feedback and build and co-create together. And I think it almost goes without saying that unfortunately during the times of COVID, while we briefly considered switching to do that remotely, just with scheduling, and actually with the fact that it would limit the ability of many staff to participate by having specific time slots, we decided to iterate how we would be soliciting that feedback in more facility-centric ways. We sought to do that primarily through a survey and as well as follow-up onsite discussion, and so we were able to distribute our survey to eight of the nine facilities we participated with onsites in Phases 1 and 2, and were able to receive 140 survey responses from a wide variety of staff. Next slide, please. And we're also able to prioritize if the facility was open to it with follow-up conversations onsite to really dive a bit more into the details and understand for that facility itself what means they would have to bring some of these ideas to life. You'll see here, we were able to attend six specific facilities onsite, conduct about 31 additional in-person one-on-one interviews, again with a range of staff from leadership and management who own more of perhaps the operation, culture setting, and overall protocol development, down to those delivering it bedside, the frontline staff, as well as those supporting to keep things running. Next slide, please. I did just want to share briefly, method, we facilitate these conversations through the use of conversation tools, visual cards, that helps communicate and capture an idea with a few follow-up prompts you'll see with A and B, just to begin to bridge toward realization. So we talk about maybe being able to create some sort of group support service. Questions that our team has that would help inform how we design these interventions is, you know, is this something you anticipate using on a 30-minute lunch break? Would that fit you and your needs most, given your personal and professional duties? Conversely, it's just something that you would benefit from having access to after hours, perhaps weekends, off shift, or other times that might work for your needs. So using the visual as well as a brief follow-up conversation, we were able to leave with a bit more information to help fuel our design process. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of just the entirety of ideas that we were able to share back with staff members to get input on, and you'll see there's a range of things in here from, you know, very clear tactical ideas, placing hand sanitizer in more patients, perhaps putting Xs on chairs to really call out the need for social distancing in collaborative spaces like staff break rooms. We also have a bit more fluid or flexible ideas when you begin to consider things like a staff appreciation campaign, really acknowledging the hard work of every long-term care staff member, but considering how they might like to be recognized. Not everyone is keen on having, you know, big showy external displays of gratitude, maybe a more one-on-one or less frequent form of recognition might meet their needs better. Next slide, please. And it was through an aggregation of conducting our onsite discussions, reviewing the survey data, channeling design strategy labs, that we really arrived at pursuing our design directions on preventing staff burnout and building staff morale, which really are two sides of the same coin when we begin to consider long-term care staff well-being, the current challenges and gaps there today, and how we might move that forward. Next slide, please. And to share a bit more about the thought process and rationale behind that, for anyone not familiar with burnout and low morale, perhaps in health or healthcare settings, it is a very well-studied area, and the negative implications and impact that burnout has on staff, especially that burnout has on staff, especially healthcare workforces, is incredibly apparent, and it affects our ability to perform daily tasks, focus, affects long-term health. It's a pretty extensive unfortunate list of circumstances. And what we find is that, you know, with the long-term care staff specifically, there are very well-known and documented root causes as well. We know there's low pay, high turnover, not ideal staffing ratios, and as well as just stressful and challenging work. And I think this is something we have shared in our prior conversations with all of you. And we know that these considerations matter, especially in the long-term care space, is when it affects an individual's ability to perform their daily tasks, and their daily tasks pertain to affecting someone's life potentially, there is a need to really focus on this and figure out how we can perhaps move the needle on it. Next slide. And so I think, as we've mentioned at various points in our conversations, our team really takes a human-centered design perspective in all of this. We believe in putting the person at the root of the problem, at the core of our process, and understanding their needs, their gaps, their challenges, and how we might be able to use design to kind of mitigate and resolve some of those. And we understand, you know, there are continually changing natures of COVID. We've all just sat through, you know, Austin Public Health sharing out, you know, new guidance, vaccine distribution and rollouts that are going to be happening. And we acknowledge that those will be facets that both continually change and that we continually adapt and respond to. However, the focus and emphasis on how we can create our long-term care staff in an avenue that has better pay, that reduces the burden and reduces the overworked nature of their line of work, is going to remain unchanged unless we're really able to focus in that now. And if we apply this human-centered lens, it really begs the question, how could we not address one of the more deeply known, most critical areas in this space? Next slide, please. And so if this is a well-studied area, it might also raise the question of, well, what can design do then specifically, and why haven't things been done prior? Our team has spent the first few phases of this project understanding the problem space in our frame and understand phases, as we call it. We've strategized with these three tracks, as Stacy shared at the start, how we believe we can move forward and really try and execute on a couple key areas of this problem. And we are now bridging into our prototyping stage, where we create solutions themselves, launch them, bring them to life, and allow them to actually exist, learn from those, and iterate our process accordingly. We anticipate not actually getting everything right and nailing it on our first attempt, and hope to use this process of trial to actually learn and be able to output avenues that we think might have more sustainable impact longer term. Next slide, please. And lastly, before bridging into sharing the prototypes, I did just want to briefly ground the conversation in what is a prototype, as I know various sectors and individuals might have different interpretations of the word. But for us, this really is that initial realization of an idea or concept in a way such that people can experience, interact, and engage with it in service of identifying ways to improve the idea itself. So for us, these can be everything from actual instruction guidances that folks can read to trying out actual therapeutic services via virtual means, all the way to standing up a physical, interactive space where maybe someone could come and get supplies. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I wanted to share the status of the four current prototypes that we are in progress of developing and continuing to work through. We are excited to share these now. We believe in sharing things early for feedback. And I also want to reinforce that we are still working actively through some of the details and logistics of these. And we welcome sharing each of these at a high level and then allowing for some time on discussion with everything I just shared, but especially some of these prototypes. The four prototypes are an essential care pantry, the gratitude portal, a service connection, as well as one-on-one support. And as I've mentioned now a few times, if we're thinking about creating, hopefully, now-term impact from more of a systems perspective, from a design lens, part of what that means is really thinking about how we can encourage and start a series of interactions from the simplest point. So for us, that really is the essential care pantry, which I'll share in more detail. It is the anchor of interaction, I would say, that the rest of the prototypes build from. From there, we begin to wonder, you know, if we have this set point of interaction with people, how can we use that to incentivize repeat behavior or potentially expand those interactions to bridge into something that might help folks build more behaviors and strategies to help longer term, you know, potentially cope with some of these challenges? And then lastly, how can we use the collection of these to really foster relationships and help create avenues for which people can identify and find avenues to receive support in a variety of ways that might be necessary for them as individuals? Next slide, please. So as I've mentioned, the first prototype that we envision is the essential care pantry, which I've already kind of acknowledged as being the anchor of this interaction. So it is what it sounds like. It is a physical space onsite that would be staffed with a variety of essentials. You know, it could be food staples, cleaning supplies, toiletries. We also acknowledge there's potentially a seasonal angle it could take with, you know, back-to-school supplies, for example, components like that, as well as maybe some little luxuries or other self-care niceties that others might not be able to always purchase or acquire for themselves. And ideally, this would be something that is free to all long-term care staff to access. Next slide, please. And part of the reason that we believe in moving forward with an initial direction like this is we've heard repeatedly from some of the long-term care staff that really work at home are, you know, the few places that they'll consider going. Obviously, there are other behaviors individuals choose to practice, but there is just such a, I would say, a filtering and a down-selection of the activities they choose to engage with, such that we really felt the need to ground this in the location perspective in the facility as much as possible. We envision this being, you know, something that could be staffed or could be stocked based on the staff's needs, you know, conducting some sort of assessment prior and curating it so that we provide what's actually needed as opposed to just basically making assumptions based on what we think they might need. Next slide, please. And of course, a line of thinking our team is actively pursuing is the notion of, you know, we're keenly aware of the positive and then potential negative impact of coming in, dropping an essential care pantry, allowing it to be stood up for a couple months. Our work is going through the end of March, and then removing that. And so part of, you know, thinking about the sustainability of something like this is how could we leverage local corporate partnerships, local retailers, local grocers, or even private donations? We've all been seeing, you know, various next-door threads, for example, people asking how they can help or where they can donate supplies. And so how can we be an aggregator of sorts and kind of prompt some of that to be collated in a singular location such as an onsite essential care pantry in a long-term care facility? We also anticipate, you know, there being ways to potentially move this and scale it in the future if we consider a form of a digital platform where we can be extending the reach of how we identify needs and how we connect people who might be able to meet some of those needs. It could help also grow the model as well. Next slide. Our second prototype, the gratitude portal, really hones in on this notion that since the start of COVID, but honestly even prior to that, long-term care staff has never been held at the same level, recognized, appreciated, even respected as other members of our healthcare workforce and frontline responders. And as long-term care staff have really felt the burden of COVID, we believe there's an opportunity to also help formalize an expression of gratitude and a way for them to be publicly recognized, both internally by perhaps their own resident families as well as externally by the community in ways that they're comfortable with. Next slide, please. So there are a couple ideas for how this might, you know, be realized. It could be everything from resident or staff profiles, figuring out ways to share this information externally for the community to see that, and then through that elevate the role of a long-term care staff workforce. We also believe there are opportunities in doing that to allow the community to become involved and be some of those issuers of the gratitude. It could take the form of something as simple as a letter-writing campaign, letters of thanks. I think in a very digital age, handwritten thank-you note that is personal and that acknowledges the actual work and service someone is doing can go a long way. And we have seen that happen and seen those be, you know, put on bulletin boards in facilities and show the impact of that work. Next slide. Again, as we envision, you know, if we're creating this hub of interactions where we're allowing gratitude to be exchanged in a variety of ways, where the long-term care staff experience is really elevated and garnered the respect it deserves, are there ways to, you know, connect it into some sort of donation and gifting platform? You know, could you see a staff story that really resonates with you? And should you be able, you know, choose to somehow contribute toward that? Is there a way to even scale this to other industries where similar lines of workforces are not nearly as respected or acknowledged for the work that they're doing despite the challenging times that we're all existing in? Next slide. Our third prototype that we're considering exploring and piloting out is a service connection of sorts, wherein it's creating almost a marketplace where individuals in the long-term care space might have exclusive access to a number of resources, services, et cetera, that might meet their needs and not currently exist. Next slide. We acknowledge, similar to the gratitude portal, again, this need that the long-term care staff doesn't necessarily get a lot of the, you know, tangible or even intangible rewards that some other workforces we've seen reap during these times. You know, you see those posts of people getting free sneakers, free lunches, a lot of that. And the long-term care space, I'd say, has not benefited from nearly as many of those. And so, you know, given the timeline of our project, we're targeting a pilot launch mid-January running through March. You know, there are questions of, well, could we maybe do something from a service angle with tax preparation and helping long-term care staff with that? Could we do something to support the remote learning nature of the students and the children of our communities via some form of a tutoring service? So trying to see in this initial iteration if we could launch something like that to determine how that works with staff and if it's something that would be of value. Next slide. And again, as we look to learn from this process and iterate it as we move forward, you know, we could decide if that service connection idea really should transition more toward an essential care pantry format and meeting more basic essential needs, or conversely, if it has the opportunity to expand into something more on the lines of offering creature comforts, for example, like a family cooking class, for example, taught remotely as we may not be able to be in a cooking space yet together. Similarly, we see a way to maybe evolve a more donation or gifting aspect of this to help with the potential financial sustainability and viability of the model. And then lastly, a bit more conceptually, thinking about how might we be able to leverage some sort of a marketplace notion here? You know, if other folks are able to potentially donate services, there might be a way to do a trade-for or exchange, or offer sliding scales or explore other models to, again, figure out how this could both evolve and be sustained in the long term. Next slide, please. And the last concept we'll share is one-on-one support. And so part of the idea with the first three is to meet a variety of needs in a variety of ways. And our team also acknowledges there is always the possibility that that may not be enough, that may not also just be how people choose or prefer to interact with services. And the one-on-one support is really, I would say, almost a safety net prototype of sorts, wherein folks can be, can choose to opt-in and receive additional support and services as needed. Next slide. And we envision this, you know, kind of being operated with licensed mental health professionals. They could understand who might be interested in these types of services, and, you know, even on a weekly basis, just offer up via text or something, via text, email, their availability, and work with staff to connect, you know, however long is needed during those times to determine if it's a matter of enrolling in the array of social services that might exist, if it's connection to behavioral mental health support, and might just be, in other instances, a need for a listening ear. Next slide. And lastly, as we look to see how this specific prototype might be able to evolve and expand moving forward, looking at regional expansion, you know, if this is something we're piloting, hopefully, in the facilities that we've currently been working with, are there ways to actually allow this to happen in every facility? Could it become a standard or a norm? Looking at further ways to create a sustainable model or integrate this into facilities, you know, what does that mean from a staffing perspective? Is this something that, long-term, you know, would continually be outsourced to a third party external to the facility? Or would we invest in, you know, creating roles for individuals within the facility to offer those services and house, build those relationships, that rapport, and arguably become that much more successful with providing the services? Next slide. So again, just to kind of recap the intent, you know, looking at the essential care pantry as being this anchor of interaction, if we're able to provide free supplies, materials, et cetera, drawing people to a single source of safe interaction within a nursing home, bridging into gratitude portal and service connection, which really helped to similarly meet basic needs of long-term care staff while allowing for there to be an elevation and additional respect to be garnered for the hard work and roles that they are performing daily in the long-term care facilities. And lastly, one-on-one support, our safety net catch-all, hoping that if the other three don't always meet the needs of an individual, that we'll be able to address them via another avenue. Next slide. And I will very briefly just touch on the next steps we have for this track as well as the other two tracks, which, as Stacy mentioned, we're currently beginning to ramp up a bit more now that our track one work is well underway, and then we will open for discussion. But our track one next steps is we are continuing actively this week and next, our prototype development, and we'll be finalizing those after sharing them out with facilities, ideally for some additional feedback considerations. For example, with the essential care pantry, you know, can you send us a photo of the space in which this would ideally be set up for you so we can think through more of the construction considerations and installation? We'll also be finalizing our plans for each of these prototypes for how we might measure and evaluate them based on data that nursing homes might already be collecting, as well as some additional metrics our team might be interested in exploring. We are targeting a mid-launch, mid-January launch for these with a conclusion targeted toward the end of March to work with our project timelines. And we'll ideally be sharing these all back again, perhaps to all of you come spring. Next slide, please. For the regional collaboration, track two angle, we are actively in conversations with Austin Public Health to determine if there are ways for us right now to be supporting a few avenues. We're aware that there had been some conversations with Integral Care, Austin Public Health, and actually a facility that we, our team, has visited in town to see, I think, more of a group format, a group therapy support service. And so our understanding is that that might be concluding in December. And so if there are ways for us to kind of pick that thread up or help support to extend that longevity, at least until the first quarter of 2021, we're working actively to see if there are ways for that to happen, as well as some other more, other workforce solution ideas that we have been identifying as ways to augment some of the staff challenges and considerations there. Next slide, please. And lastly, track three. We can't do this work, we believe, without really acknowledging one of the longstanding root causes that emerged in our first phase of work has been a topic of repeat conversation and repeat reinforcement whenever we try to understand, you know, where the challenges are in this space and why. And that is just the low wages that the staff make. And we understand, you know, we've heard how many hurdles exist from a policy and regulatory angle with reimbursement rates, about why that is the way it is. And yet, we're going to try and push and see what we can do in that regard as well, understanding that we actually do have an interesting timing with our project, with the legislative session starting. Just trying to see with our role and our learnings if there are ways to create tools, resources, other sorts of documents to help explore different conceptual facility financial models, perhaps, you know, when you look at what it means to invest in staff retention, it may seem like a cost right now, but are there ways to actually understand how you might be saving money in the longer term? Looking for ways to identify maybe where there might be resource, you know, human or otherwise, financial waste in the system, and how could those be understood and investigated and potentially repurposed in service of seeing how our team can work toward supporting changes in staff paying retention, which is just such a critical need in this space and one that directly impacts the quality of resident care and outcomes? Next slide. So thank you for all of that. I understand it's probably a lot to catch us up on from September. We've been working pretty quickly and immersively in this space, trying to see how quickly we can make something happen while hopefully being thoughtful and intentional about it. So we're excited to hear any thoughts, questions, conversations from the mayor and council.
Before we open up for questions, just one concluding statement from me. This is Stacy again, that really the work has us focusing on alleviating and offsetting both the material, the physical, and the emotional burdens associated with doing this work as long-term care workers. We recognized early in the research that really the system survives on the force of will and the generosity in the work of those essential care workers. And actually, supporting them and ensuring that they stay well is critical, ensuring that the system stays well as well. Um, and actually supporting them and ensuring that they stay well is, is critical, ensuring that the system um, stays well as, as well. So I think at this point, we're um, uh, happy to hear questions, commentary, uh, any discussion from the council and mayor and, and others.
Great. Really thank you for that, uh, colleagues, um, Paige and then Kathy.
That was a really interesting presentation. I um, am thankful for all the thought and research that went into this. Did you find that there was a lot of variation from facility to facility? Or did you find they were all kind of following the same patterns and identifying the same needs?
I think um, based on the survey results, we did have infection control, morale and burnout kind of bubble up across facilities. Um, of course, within that, there, um, in the follow-up conversations, you're able to unpack nuance. I think where the facility um, you know, might have more or less impact is when you consider things like um, leadership, operational cultures, things like that, really impacting staff morale in that regard. Um, there were folks who felt um, pretty competent, up to speed on their infection control, their training needs, knowing um, where they could go to ask for help, and then you also can see the flip side of that. So there were some needs, I would say, that were across facilities, and then ones that definitely um, were more or less affected based on the facility.
I, I can really appreciate that because we may sometimes think that medical professionals, because they have so much knowledge and background, that they aren't also suffering the same human conditions of surviving the pandemic as well. And so they're really trying to do double duty, where they're doing their jobs, they're helping their patients, but at the end of the day, they're also still going through this, just like everybody else, and really need our, our support and attention. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy?
I just really wanted to say thanks. Um, we don't always hear from, from um, the two of you at our presentations. And, and when we do, it's on the couple of occasions during the pandemic we have, it's just been extremely illuminating, I think, for, for me, but also I would anticipate for the public that may interact less with, with some of the care facilities and those who are, are really critical to, to the work that goes on within them. Um, I think the ideas you've presented are really innovative, um, and I hope our community will rally around them. And I just, I just wanted to express my appreciation for, for this hard and really creative work. Thank you.
Thank you.
For this work, and it, it's great to, to have this interaction with the University of Texas. There's so much resource uh, available on that campus for us and expertise, uh, and, and I really appreciate these opportunities. Anne?
Uh, yes, I really appreciate this work. I, I, I will echo what my colleague said. And I really appreciate you um, uh, doing this work in the context of setting the staff, uh, setting a path towards um, implementation and sustainability. Um, I think that, you know, while recognizing that the, you know, that the, you know, that the um, underlying problem is the low wage. So um, so I think that our, our legislative um, uh, package includes doing what we can as a city to support efforts to address the wage levels. But what I, what I particularly appreciate about this also is some very innovative ideas that are really doable, I think. Uh, from a community standpoint, through, to common, through combinations of many different potential. I mean, you know, our, our, from a public health perspective, there's work that the city could do. You know, from central health perspective, from the work with managed care organizations in town who could also contribute, and the community as a whole. I mean, because part of this is, as a community, these, these are people we need to take care of because they take care of our, of our elderly. Um, and these are some of the most low-wage workers that we have in our city. And, and this, and our city has focused much of our effort on trying to help our uh, communities, our lower-income communities and our communities of color have access to resources. And so this is, you know, the, these, this set of folks, five, five to six thousand people, I think you gave us numbers at one point, uh, that are doing and um, doing what we can as a community um, to, to help. Um, I think there's significant things that we can do in addition to continuing to push on the, you know, the fact that they need to be paid better. But I think we, we don't have to wait and rely on the legislature to fix that issue, to do other kinds of things. It can be a very real uh, tangible support for them. So if I'm understanding correctly, what you all are doing is you're actually going to, to try out these ideas and try them out in a way that you can then learn from them, um, which, which I think will be a, you know, huge help to then taking them to sustainability and finding the community partners who can fund and sustain them over time. And I remember that when you presented this to us, we had the discussion about how um, you know, our facilities are not, in the sense of the resources they bring to the table. And so there were facilities um, in the, you know, the eastern part of our city who have not participated in the study, even despite y'all's attempt to reach out to them. Um, and you noted in your study, the, the challenges that those uh, those facilities have. Uh, that relate, that really relate to the fact that they're primarily taking Medicaid patients and they don't get paid as much. So regardless, I think that you're piloting these kinds of um, these, these kinds of solutions and activities can then be something that can be um, that it can be used in those facilities also. So um, and perhaps with additional community support, or city support, or central health support, or, you know, other supports. But um, just the access to, you know, to, to food and other supplies through the essential food pantry could be very, very helpful to people. So I'm excited to see how that works out. So um, and just wrapping these workers with all the support you've talked, talked about can make their lives easier and, and, and help um, you know, given the fact that they're not being paid what they should be paid. That's all I have to say about that. So thank you. I just want to say thank you very much, and I appreciate y'all's work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank, thank you.
One other thing, I would also ask, if you haven't done this yet, and you may have already been connected, I'd like to make sure y'all are connected to our senior commission.
Yes.
And I'm sure they would uh, appreciate the chance to work with you um, as you move towards, you know, testing and these things.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Kitchen. Um, we were connected with the senior commission um, subsequent to our last um, presentation and had some very productive conversations and have met with them. They've helped to inform um, a, a number of the work, much of the work that we're doing right now. I would, I would just say that um, you know, uh, our goal is not only to affect, you know, the individual facilities in which we intervene, but actually develop models that we hope others will take up as well, and to prove that, provide the evidence that they can work. Um, and more importantly, that is to recognize that um, this will be a, a broader effort to establish some of the components in community and a regional collaboration level, and then ultimately, hopefully through uh, uh, policy and governance that actually supports uh, continuance of, of, of addressing these challenges over time. So um, I'll, I'll, I'll just sort of end by saying thank you again, particularly to you, Councilmember Kitchen, but to the council and the mayor as a whole for being very supportive and being, having the courage to lean into this challenge, right? Um, it is, it, um, it's not uh, it's not the usual tact um, to, to look uh, at this problem and say, we should actually do something about it, and then actually do something about it. And so um, you deserve a lot of credit in collaboration with other entities, including the Michael Susan Dell Foundation, who want to see this work done well, not only for this community, but for others as well. So thank you for that.
I think, is there anybody else, anything else on this? All right then, Stephanie, Stacy, thank you so much.
Mayor, I think I saw uh, Councilmember Rintaria's hand raised.
Bo, did you have your hand raised? Go ahead. Thanks, Anne.
Yes, I did. And I also want to thank them, you know, it's for someone that, growing up and uh, uh, working, uh, my first job was at a, at a nursing home and uh, and I know how hard these people really work for the low income, uh, low wages that they earn. And, you know, this is exciting, especially the food pantry, because I know that I've, I've had friends that are working, and family that are working in the, in the assistant living uh, business. And uh, uh, they sometime have to work double shift, you know, because someone don't show up. And, and the food pantry is very important for them because, you know, they're not going to have the time to go out and, and uh, get the food for their kids. And, you know, these people are, 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 are single parents, which is very hard on them. And, and I'm really glad that you're going to be looking into this because uh, it's, it's, I think it's one of the most overlooked uh, decisions in this, in this uh, in, in this society. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Amen to that. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, anything else before we move on? Kathy?
Just very quickly, I think our staff, but I, I too want to echo the thanks to Councilmember Kitchen because she has really been an advocate for um, pushing this work forward. And so thank you, thank you colleague for really um, continuing to, to make us aware of, of the importance of this area.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Manager, I think those are all the presentations.